Okay.
Thanks for your time this morning, guys.
Well, we got you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
You still ride that old car?
No. One more payment, it's mine.
Sounds good.
You drive that old station wagon, that's when I first met him.
I got nine of them.
Do you?
Yeah, well, eight, one's my wife, she won't be right. I can't even sit in that one.
Okay, good. It's all one certain model, one certain year?
They're all pretty low Buicks, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that, we've engineered it?
Yeah, I get that.
It lasts forever?
Yeah, no, I have this one outside, it's three D forty, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
You might have to.
Is that heavy equipment operators thing? I have a brother-in-law that does heavy equipment, he drives a, he used to drive a Buick around everywhere too, an old Buick.
Old station wagon, Buick, it's four hundred miles. He's so ear-tang when he comes driving their shit, man, it's keep coming up. That's good. That's good. Let's see, let me add another.
Better take the guys.
I'm gonna take these guys here.
They, they need their sleep, they're going goose hunting in the morning, so.
Deep, spot up, get next gear of energy.
They need to get back and get some rest.
We'll see if we're good.
Trying to catch up, took about eighteen hours to get up here yesterday, so.
Wait till Aaron gets back in for a.
Yeah.
As far as we're all concerned, you can chewed every one of them and don't bring us any leftovers.
Yeah.
We're, we're hunting near Spiritwood.
Spiritwood?
Yeah.
Where's, uh, Russ's office?
Uh, so if you go out here on the highway and take a left going on thirteen, and then there'll be a cemetery, take another left.
Golf course.
Yeah, the golf course road, they're up on the hill, just go right past the golf course entrance, another hundred feet, you'll see the building, all the equipment.
Like, uh, just to the south of the golf course, west side. This might be a. Might be, yeah.
It's alright, it's, it's worse when you do the whole trip and then it's like a thirty-minute meeting and then turn around, eighteen hours back, yeah.
You can get a private plane, you can get a limo or whatever, you know?
That'd be nice.
Are you guys over in that, is that part of your project over there in Washington?
What's that?
That wind turbine development over in Washington, is that you guys?
In which county?
Washington.
McIntosh, Logan.
Logan.
I'd have to look.
The Badger Wind Farm, I think you guys are.
I don't think that's, uh, uh, is it?
I think that's Next Air, isn't it?
Badger.
Right, I don't think it is.
Is it?
It's not you guys?
Abbott, no.
Okay.
It's not you?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
It's not one I'm working at least.
Okay.
I haven't, have you heard that, that Badger, Mike?
Should we move on with the meeting or wait for air?
Let's move on.
Yeah. Welcome, guys, here comes.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for, uh, having us again, um, appreciate, I mean, I'll start just by saying, I mean, obviously, go to a lot of counties and a lot of different states and, uh, it's really interesting, you, you guys' dynamic and your organization, I mean, is, uh, definitely top-tier, I'll just say that.
Thank you.
Not the brownies, as, uh, as you said earlier, but, um, no, I appreciate you having us again, um, you know, just wanted to, it shouldn't take up too much time, I just wanted to talk, um, you know, I know we presented a couple of months ago, um, one, wanted to see if there was any questions or lingering concerns or questions that came from that, that maybe I can either answer or take down and try to address later. Um, so I'll pause there, I mean, was anything come up from, uh, the presentation a couple of months ago? Like clarity on or anything?
Hmm.
Okay, cool, okay, um, yeah, if they give anything, I mean, happy to bring people here and, and answer more questions or whatever, uh, I just want to offer that up, so. Um, the other thing, you know, just wanted to go over a couple items, just looking for clarity on, um, I'll be meeting with Marlis on Thursday, we're kind of just going through application and process, things like that. Um, and one of the things, just wanted to, um, to go over how the, uh, previous wind farm was, uh, the application went through for the CUP there, um, as well as the fee, and then, uh, just looking for some clarity on, um, setbacks, thing, things like that, and, um, if you're able to pull up that parcel, um, that map that we have there. Um, so, the previous wind farm, uh, from two thousand and eighteen, um, what we had done was, uh, for the application, it, obviously, it's agricultural land, that, that's the, um, substation right down there at the bottom, uh, left right there. Um, so that application went through as an agricultural CUP application, and, um, we had paid twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty for that fee. Um, and what we did was, we took that two hundred and fifty dollar, uh, CUP application fee and multiplied by all the turbines. So, I, I just wanted to kind of present, I mean, what I was thinking and, and what we were going to follow suit with that was to pay that two hundred and fifty per container for this battery. Um, you know, just to try to be fair to the county, you know, it is a pretty big application, I mean, we, we want to be, uh, consistent with what we did before as well, you know? Um, we're obviously here in agricultural property, again, adjacent to the substation. Um, that previous CUP had included, uh, for the turbine placements, the O and M building, uh, two substations and two T-lines. Um, our application would just be for the best containers, um, that'll be going i- in that lock-two area, and depending on the setbacks, we may need to extend a little bit further to the north, um, pass that, pass that access road there a little bit, just depending on, um, how the setbacks are determined. Um, so I just want to bring that up and, and just propose that, to see how you guys feel about that, is there any, anything else that, um, you guys are thinking, concerns for that application or different process?
This is your initial low-ball approach on Dallas?
It's not really low-ball, I think it's my initial, just trying to stay consistent, you know, um.
I've done it as a land man, you know, your approach will.
Yeah, I mean, low-ball would have been, hey, your application fee's two hundred and fifty bucks, you know, uh, I don't think that's fair, you know, um. But, uh, you know, just taking the, the same approach from last time and just, just flat out presenting it.
The dogma still works.
How many, uh, containers have you got?
Hundred and thirty-eight.
Oh.
So, it would actually be a higher, um, we'd be paying more than we did for the wind farm, uh, even though it's a, you know, much smaller, uh, footprint, but it would come out, well, a hundred and thirty-six, I should say, so it comes out thirty-four thousand.
What's the total cost of this project?
Hundred and eighty-five million-ish.
Ish.
Give or take.
Give or take a dollar, a few cents, maybe. Think the wind farm was, um, around four hundred.
And how is it returning?
But, you know, I'm not on the operations side, but, um, I, I know the customer's happy and, um, it's, it's generating what it's supposed to.
So these turbines now, this will be a benefit if you do this correctly, and all these old turbine sites, will they constantly be generating electricity to, to possibly constantly turn it? And pouring electricity into these batteries, correct?
Yes.
So you won't see this dead turbine standing in the landscape?
So, sometimes the turbines aren't spinning for, for, there could be a hundred reasons why they're not.
Ammunition, whatever.
You know, but, but it's actually a benefit not only to the wind, it would be a benefit to any, any source of energy, so i- if you had coal in the area, oil, whatever. You know, the, the way that it works is just with, with your, uh, grid operator, with your grid owner, um, obviously, they put that investment into the wind generation to get, you know, cheaper energy. So when that's spinning, it takes precedence over everything else, so when the turbines are spinning and producing, oil, gas, anything else kind of, kind of takes backseat. This would open up more capacity, so while the turbines are spinning, oil and gas could still be producing, and this opens up that additional megawattage, so it kind of opens up the, the room for like everybody to produce at the same time.
Can I ask you another question, maybe it's out there, but if I ask, it's on my mind, it's been on my mind. When these turbine development sites or these projects get negotiated, do you ever sit with boards and you negotiate for the people within that county, that environment? That these turbines are going on the landscape, San Ellen's, McIntosh, Logan counties, that you sit down and discuss? Be that's going on the landscape for X number of years, and there's X number of megawatts being generated? That there's a percentage that comes back that within these counties are at a reduced rate for kilowatts being used? For the people that look at these turbines indefinitely?
Right, um, so that, I'm not a hundred percent sure how to answer that, because the, the projects are for your producers of energy, for the people you're getting the energy from. So, it brings, it keeps your bills lower as opposed to them having to buy electricity from other generators, they're generating it themselves, and it's a asset that pays for itself over time. So, in a way, yes, and then obviously you have the, the, the tax benefits and, and things like that, but, um, you know, I, I don't know that I'm fully equipped to a- answer that fully.
Another thing, like on this project, is there a Q forty-five tax credit to Next Air? Like, there's a Q forty-five tax credit on a lot of these green no-deal projects?
Um, I'm not familiar with Q forty-five, um, I, there's like, uh, uh, production tax credit and, uh, infrastructure tax credits, but, um, you know, I, I can bring more clarity, especially during the, um, CUPs and stuff like that, we'll bring somebody in that, that can talk more about taxes.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there, there are definitely tax credits that come with, with any type of, uh, project like that, yeah.
And I didn't know that would still pertain to these batteries or not.
The, these would get some, these would get some type of tax.
Because it's all attached to the blue green deal there.
Yeah, I mean, any, any infrastructure that's going in the ground, that's, you know, kind of for the growth of American infrastructure, gets some type of tax credit, you know?
Yep.
Um, that, that kind, any, any industry that's, that's bringing some type of benefit, would, would get some type of credit.
Didn't we have a, was it three percent fee on permanent fee, didn't we, for industrial?
We've said the tragic cost.
About three percent?
If, yeah, that would be the industrial application, um, this, just like the, uh, the wind, all falls on, um, agricultural property, so, uh, it would be the agricultural application we're buying. The thing is, you guys were talking earlier, you only have like one little slither of, uh, industrial zone property, not by the highway.
Anything else, guys?
What's the lifespan of that project?
Um, the ba- battery, thirty, thirty-five years, but it would follow, it would likely follow the lifespan of the wind project that's currently here, so it, um, it could decommission at the same time as the wind, but lifespan is thirty, thirty-five years.
Question for you, what's happening, what are you guys doing with them props? Because that was a major issue with them, because they're, they are fiberglass material, correct?
Then, it's a composite, yeah.
Landfill, but that's filled, correct? Are they grinding them up now to use them in cement?
They're using them in a lot of different ways, yeah, they're, one of the, one of the things I've seen, they're grinding them up and they're using them in cement, um, you know, the thing was, is wind farms, turbines haven't been around for a hundred years, so, so there wasn't like a slew of them getting decommissioned, and it was never a problem that needed to be addressed, you know, in the industry, now that wind has been around for, you know, a few decades and they're decommissioning, and now we have those props, um, you know, blades, so now they're finding solutions on what to do with them. Um, but, I mean, they were ending up in holding areas just like military surplus and, you know, naval ships and everything else ends up, um, you know, luckily just hollowed out, inanimate objects, kind of just sitting there, but, um, I have seen that being the main one, where they're grinding them up into a nice fine powder.
Yeah, and using them for a binder.
Right, right, yeah, it's pretty cool to see.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there's gonna be, I mean, who knows, they'll be building cars on this powder before long, you know, it's, you know, like hemp, it's like a hundred different uses now for it, but.
Anything else, guys? Aaron, no?
Okay, um, on that, and so on page thirty-four of your ordinances, where, um, the setbacks are kind of determined, it, it's kind of unclear, at least to the point I would rather just have clarity on it, and that's going to determine how our final kind of site plans are, are made. Um, a lot of it are just saying setbacks for special condition uses shall be determined by a planning commission, um, and if you could, so what's that road going north-south, right, um, to the west of that substation there?
Or towards the first avenue?
So, I would imagine that's counted as minor county or township road? So the way that your ordinance break down is a primary.
Well, the two words, that's a regular county road.
It's a major, you're right.
That's a major, that would be.
That goes by Vermont, I guess, doesn't it?
No.
What's that?
That's the one that goes by, uh.
East-west is the Thames, I guess.
That's the one that connects, uh, highway thirteen to highway thirty-four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Saint Michael Road.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so major road, and then.
Okay, northern, so, okay, okay, okay.
And then that setback, um, is that determined from center line of the road or from the right-of-way, uh, boundary?
What's that, as soon as we come back?
Those are all center.
Center line of the road, those are.
Center.
Okay.
And we've got to be, what, on a federal aid road like that, is that seventy-five feet?
No, it's gonna be hundred and twenty-five, for agriculture district, because it's a major road, so it's hundred and twenty-five feet. Our right-of-way is usually seventy or seventy-five, but a setback is one twenty-one.
Okay, then there was an additional hundred on top of that, correct? On any structure? Wasn't that brought up, and there was an issue with them bins down there in the west field area?
Oh, that's, if it's on the intersection, yes, so it's two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet radius from the intersection. Right.
Intersection.
There will be more away from that, I'm doing my, uh.
Right, so I think, and I think that substation follows that radius, if you were to draw from the center line of that intersection, that should be over two hundred and fifty, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's right at the two fifty.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess my argument is I would consider that a primary or secondary highway, because that's the federal aid road, like, the, the major rural road would be like a non-CMC, like, ma- I don't even know how you would go, I mean, some of these, like, I know.
It's the same setback for all three of those, hundred and twenty-five for primary, secondary, or major roads.
Is it?
Right.
I'm reading for the primary highways, it's two hundred and fifty feet. Page thirty-four, for RAA and R districts, it's two hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty-five for agricultural.
What page are you on?
Those are, those are updated too, so some people might have an older vote.
Okay.
Oh.
Just like, you know, so there might be missing. That's why we're going through this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, or is that different than what you got?
Definitely.
Yes.
When were these updated, or?
That's the last.
That's what's on our website, that one.
This one's on the website.
Yeah, he's, that's what's on the website.
The one twenty-five is the one I got.
Yeah, mine's is two fifty, but that's.
Okay.
Okay.
That may be a standard. Well, it's typed, it's not handwritten, so.
I was gonna say, judging by.
Watch my accusations, studies, and I'm like, watch them.
I was gonna say, judging by the color of those papers in that, in that book, I'd say, uh, it might be yellow first.
Yeah, yellow papers.
Mandela.
Tell that to the cleavers of the constitution, my God.
President Trump now, in his office.
Well, it's reasonable, you gotta go through this book, because that's where you're finding these differences, and then maybe these amended ordinances, and, yeah.
Any setbacks exist in Jason's?
Okay. Right? I mean, I, it, it still doesn't change my opinion, I would consider that primary highway, in our opinion, I mean, just because it's not paved, it's still, I think it's even described as a highway in our agreement, since it's the federal aid.
Aid road, yeah.
Right, I mean, it's.
Isn't a primary highway like U S eighty-three, highway thirty-two?
Thirty-four.
Well, I, any of our federal aid roads are still built nearly to the same specs, width, wise, weight, all that stuff.
With the intent to possibly pave it, correct?
The only difference between them and highway thirty-four is they're not paved.
Yeah.
Still, in my mind, considered like a primary highway.
The primary highways in Evans County are US eighty-three and SR eighteen oh four.
Yeah, that's not my.
In the definitions, uh, page forty-six.
What, what page?
Page forty-six.
Forty-three?
Well, it, it's still one twenty-five and egg, you know, they're all three, so, so they're only considering eighty-three and eighteen oh four to be a primary highway.
You got secondary roads.
So, they're, they're considering the federal roads, the rural road.
Well, thirteen, we have secondary. Eighteen oh four is on primary, yeah.
And that's from center line road.
SR thirty-four, SR fifteen.
And what is your, um, what is your county, uh, right-of-way, the fifty feet or is it a hundred?
Four.
Just off the road, just out here.
It's on the road. It's typically, or usually seventy-five and seventy-one, but then.
Would be an order, seventy-five feet.
Well, they're all the same anyway.
What's the, what's the state?
Of them all hundred? Yeah, from center line or?
It's from the center line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They used to have that old highway where there were wider spots, and then they'd be those back, and then there's about seventy-five.
Okay, alright. Okay, good, so we go, here, twenty-five.
Oh, or the one thirty-four, eighty-three, that was like.
I think major roads is a terrible description. I'm just, I, what's a major, like I said, I know they have in the description, but when you first read that, you don't call to mind a specific road. Like, the primary highway, now I find, they're considering the two major paved roads in our county primary highways, that's just, I mean, but even the secondary highway, like thirty-four and all of them.
Eighty-three.
Yeah. The thing that gets clean the first effort, you know, after the snowfall, or secondary, the earlier other paved roads, primary be your, or major roads be your, yeah?
Yeah.
Come by your.
Yeah, they have major rural road in, um, on page fifty-one.
Okay.
Um, non-highway designated roads intended for, way for traffic between developed areas, so maybe that's why, is just because it's not between towns or development or something?
That road is big enough to be a major road.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's, again, like I said, like technically, like with the federal, the federal aid road is literally treated with almost the same regulations as highway three and all, but the right-of-way is.
So they can turn and they can get in stuff, and then that's big back in there all up.
Yeah.
It does say, which might in the future provide ways of traffic, so, I kind of agree.
You say widen and deter, correct, with the blades and the turbines coming?
They were signed up, huh? I'm sure they were signed up on.
They put them back to original. Did they? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, since I started helping with building permits, any federal aid road, I consider major, and then any gravel road that wasn't a federal aid road, has been that hundred-feet minor township road.
That's a minor county or township road.
That's all I can remember.
Yeah. I didn't realize it was a two hundred, okay, two hundred and fifty foot radius at all intersections. Okay.
Good on that, um.
Yeah, then there's so many guys along these primary roads, they got bales and stuff and equipment set within seventy feet on the right-of-way. Yeah?
Yeah, we won't do that. Um, and then last thing, um, real quick, so on that substation, um, we had, we had permitted the entire five-acre piece there. Um, but I did just want to clarify for this, on the bottom-left corner where your mouse is right there, um, we're gonna have to just modify that breaker bar there, just to allow for the feeders to come in, and so just want to raise that as, as just, we will have to do work in there. Um, you know, we permitted the entire five acres, but, um, didn't know, and just wanted to make sure that there wasn't gonna be an expectation or a requirement to modify that original CUP, um, for that substation for that. Basically, if you zoom in on that, uh, yeah.
That's a.
Yeah, on that far-left piece there, it's, um, pretty much just, uh, adding a couple, like breaker bars on there for the feeders to come. I know, you, you know this map like.
Hmm, yeah, we just won't have to get lost here.
And we checked with our, um, our PSC permits as well, we did the whole, the whole five acre, um, with them too, so I don't believe, um, they're gonna require it, I just want to raise, I mean, we're gonna be providing site lands, everything in the application anyways, you know, but.
Yeah.
Just to kind of proactively bring that up.
I'll show more notes, really? We're lost.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you?
Seventy-second.
What is it on the south side of those little buildings?
What's the transformer?
Uh, the, yeah, those are like break, those are, those aren't buildings, those are, um, transformers, breaker bars, yeah.
That's all fenced, isn't it?
Hmm.
Good.
Lots of cameras too.
Are there?
Is there?
Probably a good thing. Probably a good thing. Anybody jumping in one of those?
So our permit fee for a deal like this is, I think, three percent in total project?
That would be if it was a, um, industrial application?
Is this industrial?
It's agriculture. Right, so that's kind of like, that's what I'm saying, the agriculture fee is two hundred and fifty bucks, and we don't think that's fair, you know, so, we're following the way that, we're following the way that the, uh, wind site was permitted.
No, this is, we only have those two spots in Kintyre that are industrial.
So where do you start, you do, uh?
Well, I was not sure.
So, the, the PSC, we're, we're gonna probably file around the same time that we apply for here, um, typically, a- and the PSC won't even give us hearing dates until we have our local permits, um, because it's site compatibility certificate we get from them, so, um, they wouldn't give us a site compatibility if we didn't get local permits, you know, that's just how they're, yeah.
So, I.
So, but they are going to, we have talked to them, they're, they're, you know, they like the projects coming, they're gonna allow us to send the application to them at the same time, they'll do their review process,
Okay.
which will cut a month of time out of there, but they, they just won't give us a hearing date to, uh, to see if you hear.
There you go.
We've worked and are the.
Right.
I, I mean, it's.
I don't know. Well. Any inputs, Ken?
Nope.
I'm here. Aaron?
No.
Don't worry. Don't worry.
So what you're saying is, when you're talking about the permit fee, you're considering the two hundred and fifty dollars per container?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
One tiny thing.
Yes, sir, yeah, same as wind, like we said, I mean, instead of just two hundred and fifty bucks, which would be your normal fee, um, that's what they did for the wind, um, and they just did a bi-turbine location, actually, we didn't even place the amount of turbines that they paid it for, um, at the end of it, but just to follow in suit of that, obviously, this land is contiguous to the substation, it's all part of the same section that, before it was subdivided, as agriculture, um, you know, we're not doing, I mean, as far as footprint comparatively, we're not doing a new transmission, we're not doing any, anything compared to what was wind, I mean, we're just gonna be in that footprint. Just trying to minimize visual impact, you know, use, use facilities that are already there, I mean, that's kind of what the benefit of citing it that way is.
Josh, what's the, uh, taxes gonna be on this, I don't know if that's all there, any different than, I guess, just.
I have no idea, taxes, you gotta talk to.
What, what, what'd you ask?
Well.
How is this gonna be taxed?
Yeah, how would it be taxed, then, are you a cultural citizen, or are you a cultural?
No, it'll, it'll wanna be taxed based on the soils, it'll be more of the, you know, commercial lot value, I'm assuming, but valuation.
That's, that's upstairs.
You know, like the, um, the wind turbines, you want, we get a generation, transmission tax, generation tax, so we get taxed on the turbines.
Taxed by use, I think they're taxed by use, not by zone.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, I would assume, would be fairly similar, maybe a different.
Yeah, you know.
Equation, because it's.
Equation, because it's maybe a little different, but.
We're getting, we're getting those economic impact studies done to figure out exactly what it's gonna be down to the, you know, to the nickel.
Yeah.
There'll obviously be the sales tax with it and, and, you know, um, definitely be significant taxes with it. I'm just not that expert on tax law.
Are they centrally assessed, are these ones, so?
Yeah, we don't have all that on this system.
So, and, and I think that's kinda something that's, I don't know that they're gonna be centrally taxed yet. I, I, I don't know that they've, well, I, I don't know.
Only against centrally, except for the turbines.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, well, especially during the CP areas, I mean, we'll probably have some, we'll probably have somebody that can speak more to that piece, you know, to the economics and.
Is there any other project like this in North Dakota anywhere?
No, man.
No, this is the first one being placed.
Yes, sir.
Who's nearby? That people of we or we can reach out and speak to them?
There's none in North Dakota, um. Wisconsin, I think there's one, we have some in Canada, I mean, we have sixty operating sites roughly, I think, right now. Um, there's another, there's, I mean, there's a lot of them, it, it's just, it's such a beneficial thing to the grid and to generation in general that, I mean, they're gonna be going in in a lot of places. Now, I'll say, you can't ju, it's the same interconnection process that you would have to take for wind or solar or whatever. You can't just cycle one and just go build it, you have to go through, um, the studies for interconnection, you have to go through, uh, the process of, you, you know, and this would be a surplus, so this was already, this was already determined with the GIA from wind, it's a surplus GIA, so. But there would still be impact studies and things.
Well, can we get names, like in full numbers of the other places that have these battery pack units on the site, to speak to commissions that have them, that have dealt with this, pros and cons?
I, I can try to get you something, yeah, I can try to get you something for sure. Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know what, I, I'll, I'll find something, I can definitely find something, yeah. Um, and like I said, I can bring in, you know, especially during the CP areas, so, you know, we'll bring in all of our experts in that, the guys that have been building these, the guys that have been monitoring, um, and, uh, you know, incorporate that in with our presentations.
You're looking to start construction, are you?
Um, sooner the better, I mean, we're looking to try and start by, um, September timeframe because of the, the winter schedule, you know. At a certain point, once we, once you get to a certain point, we can't, uh, separate the topsoil and subsoil, um, you can't do groundwork. But the, the biggest part of that is gonna be the, um, the PSC permit timeline, you know, um, just because, but, you know, we don't know how long that's gonna take with them, might, might, might get us into the winter. And then, uh, in that case, we would be starting in springtime, uh, probably April or something like that.
Either they work.
Of next year. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's cited in a good area, you know, we've, we've done all the studies as, as we presented before. Um, we'll present all those again during the CUP. You know, using the, using the existing facilities and, and just, you know, minimizing the impact of what, what it's gonna do here locally. Um, open up to more local jobs, um, you know, uh, these are, these are kinda, I, I really like working with these because they're just, they're kind of no brainer add-ons, you know, um, they're not visually like unpleasing, you know, they're, you don't see it.
I agree with that.
Yeah, they're, they're not the same, it, it's a totally different ballgame, you know, um, so. You know, so they're, they're cited well, uh, they're, they're great, it's a great technology, benefits a lot of different things, not just one side, benefits all sides and, um, you know, that's why a lot of the excitement's building up for them, you know. Adding capacity, I mean, it adds capacity to grid without needing to add transmission. You know, so it's doing what the grid needs for your growth, for the grid, uh, for the oil and gas growth, for the oil growth. It allows for that growth without having to add, you know, big generation, big transmission lines.
I'm surprised that this is such great technology, nothing against any of it, that there is more of it introduced into North Dakota because of these data servers.
Right.
That are energy hungry.
I mean, that'll be, you know, uh, any, any sucker of electricity is gonna benefit from it, you know, and, and I don't know, um, you know, the data center is a pretty new conversation here as well.
But it's big.
It's, it's big.
There isn't much in North Dakota yet.
Right. I, I imagine there will be.
Talk about it, but there's not anything really built.
Oh, they're built, yeah, they're just.
Northern Jamesville. Yeah, but they're not what, they're not a true, what they're gonna be.
Right.
They're talking big what they're.
Yeah, they're just so new. And this, this kinda stuff will help that.
It'll help support.
It, it'll definitely help support that without impacting what you guys have.
The small engine.
Right, and, you know, North Dakota is a, you know, major generator of energy, you know, from all sources, so. You know, there is a support structure there for that growth already, but they take up a lot, you know, so these are gonna help regulate kind of those frequency, uh, you know, the differences in frequency, you know. Um, it's gonna help minimize the impact on your, uh, peak times versus, versus no demand times, energy.
You have to lose, you have to lose power on these, I mean, don't you, that, that they just don't get, it doesn't get used? I mean, the, the, some of the power that's.
It'll get you, no, so, I mean, they charge during the times where it's not being used.
The wind turbines, there's power loss that doesn't get used, I would assume, and this will catch that and hold it. So you can use it when you need it.
Yeah, a lot of the, you know, because, because the wind takes precedence to the grid and wind spinning, so it's more that other generators are producing without, you know, like coal still has to run to be ready for a decrease in wind. It's, it kinda causes them to have to run a little bit inefficient to, to be ready. This kinda allows them to run and produce, you know, to the grid, and, yeah. And it'll kinda balance out those fluctuations. It also, I mean, it keeps the bills low too, you know, because they're, your, your transmission owner is able to charge when nobody's using the energy, where it just, electrons just sitting there, the wind's still spinning, it's spinning for free. Do something with that, so they hold it, and then they wait for when everybody's home again, that's when they influx it. But you're able to now get it when it, it costs nothing versus nighttime or whatever, when solar's not producing, for instance, and it's nighttime, everybody's home. This would benefit that greatly too, just because it's, it, you're now able to use the solar energy during the nighttime, you know.
Well, is solar using the same type of a battery pack?
Yes, sir.
Same do. Okay, okay.
Yeah, the batteries just, they just capture those unused electrons, just, just being produced that aren't needed yet. And so, you know, they're able to do that when it's, when it's costing nothing, when it's a nice sunny day and, but everybody's gone at work, nobody's at home, they're able to just charge those batteries then, and then when everybody comes home and solar kinda goes away, but now everybody's home, they're still able to take all that energy.
I don't understand the scientific end of it, but these batteries all in that spot with all these electrons like you just stated, is it detrimental to man on, in that area?
No, I mean, no.
The living creature movement, no?
No, sir, no, I mean, it follows the NFPA fifty five, which, uh, I brought that book last time. Um, that, that governs all the citing for, you know, safety and, and, you know, thermal events and things like that. Um, these are self-contained units, they, they look like storage containers.
Yeah.
Um, they're safe, they're, they're completely safe from that. You know, there's no, and, and NFPA guidelines, you know, tell us what to do with the ground, there's no weeds, there's no bush, you know. I mean, it goes in everything, um, no, they're, they're, they're definitely safe, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that this is there.
And, and even in the time, so, I mean, just to, you know, there is always a question about some of these events, and there's been some recent events, California or whatever, um, those, those events were in projects that were pre NFPA fifty five guidelines. Um, completely different technology, completely different, uh, engineering went on to those. Um, but even during those events, EPA had, you know, air quality testing going on immediately, um, when the event took place, all the way to twelve hours after everything was done. And there were no levels of anything elevated that was dangerous, anything outside of the, very small footprint of it.
Cause you hear, is there merit to it, guys, help me out, is there merit to it, like a big steel robot tower with the big cables pushing energy? That you and I and Frankie and Leo don't wanna be living close to it?
Uh, I'm not familiar with that, but, I mean.
Yeah, there's radio waves, I believe they say, but.
Right.
People talk about that and then they pick up their phones and have a three hour conversation, like there's nothing coming out.
I guess there's pros and cons everywhere.
Well, this will all be fenced in, you got cameras, you got everything.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And the fence lines are all following NFPA fifty five guidelines as well, yeah.
Move on, right?
Be a lot more information to come during the CP, but, um.
Okay. Anything else good?
Nope.
Aaron, anybody know? Okay.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Have fun. Have fun.
Yes, thank you very much.
Go something, they're going to do something. Where, up north?
Spiritwood.
By Spiritwood?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Good for you guys.
Yeah, they shot, uh, guy on the way, shot twenty two this morning, um, he said it's afternoon, he'll be back.
I seen a guy, he showed me a picture, he was down last fall hunting from Bigfoot. Giving his family one, they shot eleven hundred. They had a boy and out and was on green. Just what are you doing? You see, we don't it.
Yeah, that'd be so nice, Florida is, uh, much more difficult. Much more difficult hunt.
So you're hoping for a little snow and rain?
Yes.
You don't mean?
That'd be good.
You want the wind?
Not so much that they just sit.
Yeah, they lock you a long week out.
Really?
You're gonna have a blast.
It's gonna be perfect tomorrow, I'm, I'm excited.
You'll have fun tomorrow.
I'm excited, well, I appreciate it.
Badger is owned by Montana.
For Thursday, still good?
By who, Montana?
Montana.
And you're the owner of the dogs?
A Danish company, um, developed it, Horsted.
That's the name of the company.
Horsted.
Horsted, okay. Did you hear that, Jim? Badgers owned by M D U, Horsted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
A, a British company?
Uh, Danish.
Danish, okay.
Yeah. Good Danes.
They might pull out, they might pull out of that one here too, they don't know.
Thank you for your.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
What do you mean if I pull out of that?
Well, the Danes don't like us right now, cause.
Probably not, yeah.
We're still Greenland, no.
But actually, the County Job Development Authority construction, who's in here on there?
So, um, Craig and I, were you on that, uh, role of the county commissioners?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, that was ran, um, by Aaron Burse, and there was two other commissioners, one from Montreal, one from Richmond County. She was the president of the North Dakota Association of County Commissioners.
Right.
And, and they talked about, um, job development authority came up because this guy asked a question. Right, you asked that question?
Yep.
And they basically said every county, every city for that matter, should have a job development authority. And, and it, it kinda made us, Craig and I kinda visited afterwards, kinda made us think about disirrigation project, right? I mean, that's, that, that's where you would put money in for stuff like this, for, you know, for job development. Um, and so I had, um, Marlis pull some information, and we have the authority to, to levy up to four mills for a job development authority, I don't necessarily think we need a full-time person or somebody to run it, maybe just a board, but I think we should put a little bit of thought into it, I think. Um, so in that whole century code and all that information, there's some, some things that change because Linton's got a JDA and Hazelton's got a JDA, but, um, one mill basically, I think we, Marlis came up with generate about thirty eight thousand a year. You know, and not, we can, we can put it on, we can take it off, we can raise, I mean, we have that authority as, as the commissioners. Uh, and I just, I think we kinda just wanted everybody to mull it around a little bit, I mean, I, it, it isn't a bad idea to have a job development authority, and it isn't, like I said, I don't think we need a full-timer, I don't think we'd need to keep it on for years, it would just be nice to have a, have an account that had some money in for things like this that come up that, I think it would've been a little easier in my eyes to give to the disirrigation project if it was a job development authority. Right, or any other development? I mean, you know, like Aaron said, you, you start just giving money willy-nilly out of the general fund to every project and all of a sudden everybody wants it, but when you have it levied and it's specific to a job development authority, there's either money or there's not, or it falls under job development. And it was, like I said, I, I just, I, I think at a minimum, we should at least mull it around, think about it a little bit. I don't know, Craig and I, what, you got anything to add, Craig, about, I mean?
Well, if there's money designated for a project, that's a whole nother story than just trying to take it out of the general fund.
Yeah, I think it's good, could be a good idea.
So one mill, according to Marlis, basically, a two hundred thousand dollar house would be nine dollars a year. So it, it wouldn't be a huge increase, and like I said, I don't, I mean, I think a lot of counties do four mills, um, I think Lowden does four mills, I think he just said here today. Um, I don't think a guy needs to go that crazy, I don't think we need to gouge people, I just think it would be nice to have a specific or either, I mean, I, I just think it would be a, it, it would be in Emmett's County's interest to think about a job development authority, and a board maybe to, to sit on that.
A GDA, correct me if I wrong.
JDA.
A J, yeah, yeah. Can be developed by the commission, correct?
Yes.
I gave you guys all this.
Right, but then it cannot be eliminated. It has to be a petition filed and then brought forward to a vote to eliminate by the voters, by the people. I was told that this morning, correct me if I wrong.
The Board of County Commissioners by resolution may levy for a job development authority. So, Joe, I, do you know anything about this here?
Yeah, I actually think you can by resolution get rid of it, uh, I'm trying to pull that up right now, uh, I was doing some more.
The commission care?
I was doing some more research on it this morning too, cause I didn't know that off the top of my head when we talked about it.
Yeah, yeah. I was told this morning that you cannot dissolve it unless you get a petition going, and then you bring it up at the next year election.
So there is a process for the electors to remove it, but here's the century code, it says the Board of County Commissioners by resolution may create a job development authority for the county, or may discontinue a job development authority which has been created for the county, so by resolution you can create and discontinue. There's also, there is also a process where the electors can get rid of it if they don't like it.
Right.
Uh, but they, they, they do it by petition, so we could create one, electors could petition, put it on the ballot and get rid of it themselves too. Uh, or you guys can get rid of it later on.
To establish one, could we put it on the ballot and let the people decide?
Uh, I don't know, I guess it's possible. I would have to do some further digging to see if that's, uh, something you can leave up to the ballot or not.
I mean, cause it's, you know, it's around to, the cities and the counties that got money to, to offer to these companies that wanna come in are the ones that get them, you know, I mean, and some of it's based on population and geographical and whatever else, but if you've got, I mean, this is not the best specific, uh, example or scenario, yeah. It, it, exactly, it would've been a lot easier, I think, for you guys to get money that was allocated specifically for job development authority, cause there is possibly some.
Potential.
Right, not necessarily job development, but, uh, economic impact maybe.
Oh, yeah.
So. Yeah, like I said, those two commissioners, one from Richland, one from Montreal, they both have them in their counties. And they both were very adamant that they should, every county should have a, a JDA. And like I said, it's not like a guy has to do a war, a four-mill levy and collect a hundred thousand every year and let it crank out to a couple million dollars, I just don't see the, the need for something like that. But to put some funding in there, you can always, I, I would assume every year you can start to stop that mill levy if you wanted to.
Sure, and you guys would have an involvement too, cause I was kinda doing a little bit of preliminary research to see who would have to be on that board, and two commissioners would be on the board, uh, one member of the governing body for each city of five hundred, population of five hundred or more would be on the board. One member of the governing body from the remaining cities that don't qualify for that would be on the board. Uh, somebody from the LIDC would be on it, cause they're the closest, uh, city JDA, somebody from, uh, the Linton Airport would be on it. Um, there'd be some members at large, the board altogether has to be ten to twenty people, there's a couple other.
You should, well, so.
Ten to twenty.
Does Strasburg have them?
I think they have the SEDC, the Strasburg Economic Development Corporation, and I don't know how active they are.
They levy for one.
Do they?
Hmm. Yeah, see, when you levy for one, uh, a city that takes you out of the county pool.
Well, you have, I, I, just kinda read it and it says that the city within the county is levying, combined city and county levy cannot exceed four mills, so. Let's say we would do one mill for the county. The residents in Linton City and Strasburg City, would they pay on that one mill for the county or do we have to take them out of there altogether?
So they, they haven't exhausted their four mills yet?
No.
I don't know for sure, but I. So without reading it, I, it sounds to me like they might have to pay that as well.
Okay.
Right, if you got two mills coming for Linton, Hazelton or Strasburg, then they would, they would pay on the additional mill the county levies on too.
Then it would bring in forty two.
Cause it's a combined four mills between the city and.
But maybe the cities say, well, our, our citizens are gonna get levied by the county J D A, so let's just raise ours to exhaust, you know, so make sure that we keep it within the city, they could do something like that.
Yeah.
And then that, then we, then they maybe would go out of it, but. Uh, if they're only levying one or two mills, it probably wouldn't raise it all the way to four, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I think you said Linton was two point three three or six six or something like that.
So we had, when I told them one mill would bring in thirty nine thousand, that was, cause I took the valuation, we went in Strasburg, so it'd actually be forty two thousand.
Forty two thousand.
Well then where would they get their money from then for all three? From the taxes then? Say we wanted to give this double twenty five thousand.
It'd be, it'd be a levy, it'd be a mill levy, you know, tax levy.
And it would be a mill levy on anyone who's eligible, which would be all county residents and every city resident who isn't already paying four mills to a J D A, well. Would.
Right.
Which we'd probably throw on.
Well, that they'd probably throw on. I can't imagine.
Can't imagine they would.
I, you know, I guess my opinion on it too is like, so these, these kinds of things get created and there can be a lot of good coming from them too, but. I mean, we already have the three major cities in our county all have their own development corporation, I mean, I feel like that's kind of like a county J D A, because if it's happening in Hazelton, Linton or Strasburg. What are we gonna do outside of those cities to develop anything? That doesn't mean you can't, doesn't mean, you know, like this irrigation project would be one, but. I don't see no reason why Hazelton, Linton or Strasburg couldn't contribute to this as a part of their J D A with the idea, the intent that it would help their city.
Development.
Yeah.
So then basically you're just levying more money to, you know, entice people to build projects, which can be a good thing. And you can end up with Main Street and Hazelton too, which is exactly what happens when a. Organization decides to donate money to a prospective project, you get concrete foundations and no finished projects, cause there's no skin in the game other than.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to be the Debbie Downer and make it sound like you're gonna get scammed, it, 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 they're, I'm sure there's success stories and I know, I don't know of all of them, so I'm not gonna act like it doesn't work, but. You know, even again, with this irrigation project. There's a little bit of a divide between Logan County's support and the Logan County J D A.
Oh yeah.
It sounds like Logan County's in support of it, I haven't seen anything from their county commission, other than the fact that they approved the budget. That Eric is utilizing as the director of the J D A, and so, well, Logan County's in, well. Logan County's not in the way we would be in.
No.
No.
And so that's where, not saying for or against, that's the part of the discussion though, that kinda gets lost in the weeds a little bit. Eric is a department underneath Logan County, that would be like if the sheriff's department is in on something, they're like, well, Emmens County's in, well. Technically yes, but technically not everything somebody would do in the department is something we would agree to, so you can't just speak to that and be like, well, Logan County's in, they're just waiting for you, it's like, oh. That's not the way I've been interpreting it, you know, and I don't feel like it was ever interpreted that. If you had a list of sixteen names, that, that we were gonna just dump money into it, I. I must've been at a different meeting if that's what happened, because I, I felt like that was our request to be like, if we're gonna keep talking about this, you need to give us something.
Yeah, I agree. Bring us something.
And on top of that, there's no guarantee that every name on that list is even going to irrigate, it's not like that's a full blown commitment and that was my problem from the get go.
Right.
Well, why don't you just get Dan Materia's name on there too and, 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 and Josh Adams, and, oh, we can get twenty names on the list, but are they willing to put in a thousand bucks, are they, cause.
Yeah.
A- again, the, the topic comes, when it comes to these J D As and stuff, is, it's, it's government money, it tends to be non emotional. So it's like, yeah, well, we'll do that, you know, it's a little more emotional when it's coming out of your own pocket and I feel like projects like these, state, federal, even local now. It's easy to ask for that government tax dollar because it's just not emotional, if this feasibility project goes out the window. Well, that wasn't really anybody's money, right, like, I mean, it wasn't like it came out of your pocket, well, it, it does though, and that's.
Let me, let me play devil's advocate here.
You've been all day, why not?
I have not. But, but you might be mad at me after this.
No, I'm not gonna be, I like you.
So, so you're saying that for a county project, something that benefits farmers, cause I won't be able to tap in and water my lawn with this, I assume. That the, the cities who mill their citizens within city limits should give money, the L I D C, the Hazelton J D A, the Strasburg J D A. For a project that does not involve the cities at all, zero. But yet when, when the city of Linton who pays for the Linton Airport. Pays four mills and comes to the county commissioners, because they're short a hundred thousand dollars. The county doesn't wanna pony up any money to help out the city of Linton, to pay for an airport that ninety percent of it is used for crop sprayers that benefit the county. You see what I'm saying, you're asking the city of Linton to give mills for the citizens of Linton, money for a project that benefits. Everybody outside of city limits for the most part. But yet when the city of Linton needs some from the county that benefits everybody outside of the city of limits. And they're a little short, but we're already ponying up four mills. I, I don't, I don't see, I really don't see the L I D C of Linton giving twenty five thousand dollars to this project.
See, I got.
And that's to me where a county J D A, cause everybody in the county's paid for it, makes more sense to me.
Well, I don't, I, I don't disagree with what you said at all, because I, I mean, in my opinion, I'd far more probably be advocating the support of the airport than I would be this project. And but again, it comes to the same conversation we had with the airport. You're listing these anywhere from ten to forty individuals-ish that are doing eighty percent of the business there, right? I mean, if you took them names off the list, the airports probably dead. Those are the individuals that should be, you know, paying for it essentially, like, I mean, when you're, it's, it's. Like a J D A like you're talking about is exactly what a county J D A would do, is help your airport maybe fund a project like this, I'm not saying it's not, but. That's where the argument comes even like with us as a county, you know, well, Logan County's in, Logan County's J D A is in because they do have this appropriation and. Hazelton and Linton and Strasburg are going to benefit, because if there's gonna be any development, it's mostly gonna probably be in the cities, people are gonna be moving to town or. Or there's, you know, I mean, they're not gonna build an apartment building in middle of nowhere, they're gonna build it in Linton, Hazelton or Strasburg, or, and so. You could argue that the cities would actually have more of a benefit than the county in that sense, I mean, yeah, it's out in the county and it's gonna benefit, farmers, farmers benefit is gonna be coming to town.
But taxes are based off production, right? I mean, for the most part, land tax, egg tax is, is off production. So the county's gonna benefit from higher production with irrigation, not necessarily, I mean, I don't really see a lot of people moving to Hazelton or Linton or Strasburg. If we run this irrigation and it comes to fruition and maybe some guys to, you know, these towns are gonna benefit like the winter by, the, the dapple, they're gonna have some people in for a year and then they're gonna be gone. But the farmers are gonna benefit the most from this, I mean, they're, they have the most skin in the game too, they're gonna spend the most amount of money. We don't have anybody that sells any irrigation stuff here, so that's all gonna go to Bismarck or someplace else or.
Right, but I think we're getting a little bit lost in the conversation, my point is, I don't think Linton, L I D C should give to the project. I'm saying they are probably a better avenue than the county general fund, because they are an actual J D A.
No, yeah, I agree with you.
With funds utilized for a project like that, whether or not they should or shouldn't is up to their own board and administrator, and that's where. We're getting a little lost in the lead between a J D A and the actual county government entity, and that's where. There's even just a little bit of a conversation lost with, again, I, I don't like the term that Logan County's in, Logan County's J D A is in.
Right.
That'd be like if Hazelton, Linton, Strasburg, L I D C's and H D C's dumped in, it's like, well, Emmens County's in, well, Emmens County part of it's in, the part that should be contributing. I don't feel like we have an avenue as a county government to, unless we do create a J D A, and that's where. We probably got lost in this conversation, whether or not we should or shouldn't have it, we should have a J D A if we're going to participate in projects like this.
Right.
If that's the attitude that the, this board or an entity of this county should be participating in prospective projects that could or could not. You know, fail or succeed in this county, then we should have a J D A.
Right.
And so that, again, you know. The process, which is probably gonna be a bloody one if it doesn't work out, would be that the board of county commissioners by resolution would create a J D A. And it looks to me like the century code is essentially written for the citizens to wipe it out. Right, it's not meant for the county commissioners to wipe it out because we created it.
Yeah.
So if you create it and everybody out there is like, hell no, we don't want it, they go to a petition, it goes to the ballot and then the process begins. And then our houses get ate and we're in the newspaper and whatever, so I mean, that's, that's just, right, so that's where.
That's fancy then.
That's where.
I think, I think we also have to think about these younger.
I do.
And our numbers on these younger people that wanna do different things and diversify and try different things, I mean. We're not, we're not helping them out if we don't have, I mean, I, me personally, I don't, if I get a nine dollar tax per year on my house to help out. Um, the younger generation in this county, uh, like I said, it's not like. So we pay, we pay in the city of Linton for the L I D C, it, it doesn't go away, you know what I mean, I pay it, we pay it every year, we pay that two point six six mills for. That, to me, that wouldn't have to be a thing in the county. And, and maybe we just, maybe all we do is we start off by creating a J D A, that's it for the, for Emmens County, we don't even put a mill on, we don't do nothing. But we should have an avenue to be able to.
Just destroy.
Well, anything that's, we're not getting any bigger, it's not like a ton of people are moving back to Emmens County and, and our population's doubled, I mean. We have to be prepared that if something does come along, that we can help them out or, or give them something to entice them to want to come to Emmens County. And that's why, like I said, I, I just want you guys to think about this a little bit, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Aaron, but. We have the younger generation that is here. They're, they're diversifying, they're trying different things, they're, um, you know, and.
At least everybody did.
Right.
Everybody used to be conventional farming.
Right.
The mulberry plow that was a color, now it's no tiller. And that, it's just the way things got introduced, I'm not stopping these people, they're aggressive.
Yeah.
I, I respect them.
I'm just saying, there's, there's so much happening and so many new things coming and. I think that we at least should entertain the idea of being ready for if something would come to Emmens County. Cause right now, we, we've got nothing to entice a company to stay here if they show up and it, and it might wind up being in Hazelton or Strasburg or, or Linton. Um, but it might be a gasification that came about for a while, you know, till oil dropped and everybody moved out of Bakken for the most part and dropped.
It's still strong.
It is, but I, I'm just saying, there, you know, there, there could've been incentives there too and nobody really had them.
Well, what I'm hearing from my people that live up in my area. Is land tax is getting too high, now when you say about yours will go up nine dollars, theirs are gonna go up more than nine dollars, I'll guarantee you, and they're not gonna be happy. We raise our taxes anymore, they're already on the edge of revolt. And there's people up there that have land that will never be able to use the irrigation.
Oh, and I, th- th- and this for me goes way beyond the irrigation thing, you know, I mean, it's, it's just a fact, yeah.
Well, you're right, you're right.
And, and.
I agree.
This is, to me, this is the time when you talk about this, because they're talking about a, a, a residential property tax cut, a primary residence cut. So if you're gonna offset that, people won't even see that.
Well, the farmers aren't getting a cut.
Well, they are on their primary residence.
They already are.
Well, okay.
They already are.
Enough said right there, I'm just saying though, everybody, everybody will be getting a primary tax credit of some type, I mean, we're already getting five hundred, but it's gonna go up.
Right, but it's also the reason why they wanna put caps on the counties and cities is because as soon as they do any kind of tax relief, then everybody wants to raise their road and mills and their, you know, every other mill to compensate, well, you're, we're already paying sixty and they bought it down to forty so we can raise up twenty mills and so that's the reason why.
But we're still, we're already capped.
We're capped.
Right.
Well, and we, our, you know, I mean, aren't even think about it, if we want, would wanna put it on the ballot.
I don't know if you'd have the option to put it on the ballot, it's not sentry, I think we'd have to create it and then it would be up to the citizens to kill it on the ballot, that's the way I read it.
That's the way it.
I, I read it like we create it, they either go with it or they kill it. Uh, and that's the, cause the, the avenue for us to put it on the ballot after we create it doesn't make any sense, so. I would argue that that's the, that's the pressure relief valve for the citizens to go, they did what, and then they go and they petition properly, put it on the ballot and.
Well, can't they get money like from, what is it called, gaming funds, where they got all this extra money?
I, I don't know, I, I, I think, again, this is, this is kind of a state organized project and I'm sure there's stages. And that's kind of what Eric is getting at, this is the stage where like public money comes in. And then once they get to the stage where they already have a project, then they start asking private individuals, like that's the reason why he's pushing for the public vouchers, but.
What is that, what they did on the reward?
It's kinda, you know, have they explored every option either?
Yeah.
They just came to us with the hopes that we were gonna give them twenty five thousand bucks and, cause I mean. The guy that runs the J D A, the neighboring county that doesn't know there's three other J D As in our county is a little, I, I mean, I would think he would've done some research, so. Did he explore every option or did he just come here first with the hopes that, that we'd pay, and then, and I'm not saying that's maybe a bad idea, but, you know, even just, I mean.
It's the easiest, like today, what you could pull off of the computer. On these maps, you can get everybody who lives everywhere.
I don't know, and I don't know how many people are really in favor of this project or not, maybe they're all gonna be pissed at me that I'm not willing to contribute to it, but. I can tell you another thing that just kinda bugs me about this thing is if you have sixteen signatures and they want twenty five thousand dollars, you're looking at. What, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars a signature? It's, it's not okay to ask those citizens for it, but it's okay to ask us to pay thirteen hundred dollars a signature, that's not only, I guess, and, and again, when you're, when you're, when you're. Paying out of the general fund and I'm taking money from my great aunt Betty and I'm taking money from my grandma Elmer and I'm like, do, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, it's, it's. And what are they gonna have to do with it, were the individuals on that list are the ones that are looking to be engaged in it, they wanna participate in it? I don't think it's asking too much for them to do it, even though that side is going, well, it is too much to ask them right away, it's, but again, that's just my feeling, because. If this is just one project, well, the next thing you know, you're gonna have everybody asking for it, so then Commissioner Gardner's right, if we're going to contribute to something like this. I think you have to start a J D A, because doing it from the way we're gonna even try to do it, if we were to do it, I think you're gonna run into just moral, if not legal, snap. So pulling it from the general fund to, to put it in another county's coffers for a project that might not happen, if you read that in the newspaper, would just kinda make you go, eh. Like, that's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it or be a headwind to the project, I just, if you read that as the topic of the newspaper article, you'd be like, hmm, that doesn't sound right, so. I don't feel like I'm out of line with saying that, I'll probably get a couple nasty texts in the hills or anything, it's fine, but. But again, the little bit education I have on this irrigation, since this is the main topic, is you're, you're gonna be in the neighborhood of two to three hundred thousand per pivot if you're gonna develop it. I don't feel like contributing at this stage, a thousand or two thousand dollars or whatever, if, if that's too big of a headwind now, you're probably not irrigating, I don't.
Right.
That's just, uh, from a business aspect, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with the J D A conversation, cause the next project that comes in here might have a totally different appetite. And then you're gonna try and recreate it then, so it's not a bad conversation.
Well, I'm bringing it up, we'll, we'll find out. I mean, if there are people that hate the idea, we'll know about it, our, our numbers are on, on the website, so.
I mean, we're all from the different towns, I, I, I can tell you that, that Hazelton Development Corporation and the L I D C has its supporters and its detractors. There's people that think it's a great organization and they helped out and they could probably give you five, ten names of people they really helped or developed. And then there's people on the other side of the street that'd be like, that guy screwed up this, this, so it's a tough battle no matter what, and, and so. You'll just have to remember that too, you're not gonna be greeted with open arms if you create a J D A and you're probably not gonna get with total sneer, but. It's more than likely gonna end up on the ballot, I can tell you that, because if you inflict any kind of a mill increase. It, it, it's, it's just, it's gonna draw enough and I, one thing about Emmens County, it doesn't take a lot of petitions to move something, it probably is gonna take fifty, maybe a hundred signatures, I don't even know if it'll take that much. And it'd be on the ballot and then there you go, and then it's, I mean, so if you're gonna move forward with that. I mean, that's, it's, it's more than likely gonna be a battle, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it wasn't, but.
It's no different than farming guys, there's the guy, the young guy, that's the leader, and he's willing to take a chance on a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
He's gonna invest in it and Frank, Pete, Leo and John are gonna sit back and watch him do it, either he's gonna fail. Or he's gonna move forward, he's got three steps ahead of these guys, because he did it, but he may fail.
But he may fail and financially take a hell of a financial loss, but he's the guy that tried. But he had money invested. He didn't get it for nothing. Nobody donated it to him. He took a chance on his own. And that's where I'm coming from. I don't wanna hold these guys back, but I just don't feel all these other people and I'm sitting here as a commissioner representing all the other people, that I should be allocating money to this.
Yeah, no, I, and, and I'm not necessarily, like I said, we just needed to make a decision either. We kept the can down the road, we did everything we asked, we just needed to either.
There's a long face that there's, you know, there's always a long face or a smiley face when they walk out.
Yeah.
We probably should have just said no to him initially.
No, I don't wanna say no to it. I, I don't wanna fund it, but I don't, I don't see any reason why I can't keep moving forward. I, if this is the biggest hiccup of this project, this project's not happening. I don't, if twenty-five thousand dollars to match a fund, it, it, it's dead already. So I feel like it's a cruel money.
Project.
Well, our, our job as, our job as a regulator and as an entity is to be like, yeah, sure, let's go through a permitting process. Let's follow setbacks, let's make sure you do this stuff, just like Next Air is doing when they come in here. How do you want us to do this project? Well, we can't do it that way, can we do this way? And as a group, that's what we're trying to navigate. The finances, I think, should come from another side of it. And I would agree with you. I think if we were to give money to this project after we already thought that the airport should hold its own water, I think that'd be completely unfair. And I think it'd be way more consistent for us to just continue on the path of like, well, you should try and fund it yourself and if we can help somewhere else, we'll try and do that. And I think that would be more consistent if, I would agree that actually the airport deal would probably be another J D A type scenario where if you wanted to create a county J D A rather than an airport mill.
Well, and the L I D C did give money to the airport, actually. They, they gave, they gave this year, but I think they're still.
I think it would be terribly unfair the airport. I'm just saying, I think it'd be unfair the airport, like, yeah, we gave it this irrigation project, not the airport. I, I'd be totally upset about it then.
I have nothing against the airport deal, nothing. I'm glad that airport's here. If I was in the egg sector, we use it to spray on.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. And I'm probably gonna be tortured with darts when I leave here, but whatever. Why didn't they change the name of the Linton Municipal Airport to the Emmons County Airport? And I heard that they would not do it because of identity. And I'd come up, why? Is there merit to what I'm saying or no? And that's what kinda puts our.
Well, I jokingly brought that up in a, in a city council meeting that maybe if we changed it to Emmons County, there'd be more buy-in from people that live in Emmons County. And uh, those darts that you're talking about, they came flying at me pretty much from.
Because you changed this idea of Linton.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, um, it's easy for a guy who moved to Emmons County thirty-one years ago to say that, but it isn't easy for a guy who's lived here for fifty or sixty years to say that, or was born and raised here, to say, you know, that grew up in Linton and.
Yeah.
Um, I guess, I've always, I mean, what's, what, I mean, I'm proud of Linton, I'm, I'm proud of Emmons County. I don't really, I'm one of them guys, I don't really care what the name of it is. It, it's just something we can't lose. You know, and, and the airport is a tricky deal because it's federally funded, it's state funded. So you can't, you can't just say, well, charge these applicators another five thousand dollars every time they land there. Well, it doesn't work that way because your federal funding says you can only do that. I mean, it's really, it's, and I don't know all the details, but I know that it's really touchy. Everything is really touchy with the airport, with the federal part of it.
Right, right.
So, um, you can't really raise your rates, you have to be competitive, cause if you don't get so many planes in, that affects your federal funding as well. So it's kinda, it's, it's a goofy situation, but.
But some of the rental rates that are out there, when I seen it, you know, on these hangars, it's a joke.
Yeah. See, and I don't know how that all pans out. I honestly don't know that. They, you know, they came to me, uh, maybe two or three months ago, a couple members of the Airport Authority, and said that they were gonna show up here and visit with us and never showed up, so I'm not sure.
To put the cherry on it and sa- and save us all, since we're all in agreement and disagreement on several topics here. I mean, we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
It's not gonna break the county budget. Like, it, it probably would be fine no matter what, but we just discussed with our road superintendent, how twenty-five thousand might be the difference between bringing on a full-time guy and not, or purchasing a important piece of equipment or not. And I would say, if you took a poll of all the citizens of the county, they would much rather see that twenty-five thousand go to a full-time employee or a, or a game-changing piece of equipment, something along that line. So if you were gonna make that argument of just county general funds or finding the money from this table, I think giving it to Russ and Rhodes would probably solve all the things we just talked about. And just like, hey, we don't wanna do that, we don't wanna do that. Let's get another blade out right now, let's, let's get it. And, and so, a- again, if you're feeling like maybe you should've went one way or the other, that's what helps me sleep at night is knowing that if I'm keeping that twenty-five grand and putting it towards Rhodes rather than any of these other projects, even if I'm wrong about them other ones, I'm still right putting it on the road. So I'm gonna vote to put it on the road.
I see.
I don't think any of you disagree with that.
Yeah, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
I think that's what we need to be and.
Due to Rhodes and it gets on you.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to just kinda do a rough straw poll with the people you know and be like, what do you think about a county J D A? Cause I think doing it without even talking to people would probably get us in a firestorm.
Oh, absolutely.
I think if you, like you said, it was a good idea to bring it up this meeting. It's more than likely gonna be in the paper. Maybe it'll gain some steam and maybe people do want that. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea necessarily because the next project coming in maybe could be a game changer for the county. We have an avenue where we could help it out, where right now, we really don't, we're not even in the position to help out if we did.
Right.
I mean, really, if we wanted to.
Well, nobody wants any higher taxes. That's why I say, it's not like this has to be a coffer. Where you do one mill and you take in forty thousand dollars every year for the next thirty years.
Yeah.
What do you need, you don't need money like that. It would just be seed money, is what I would think. Something that you put on and take off.
But should they have cap on it, on the eighty-two that deal?
Well, and then that's, and that's what, I mean, you do that with sales tax, you know, sunset clause and all that kinda stuff, but a mill, it, it's a pinky swear amongst all of this.
The only other thing to remember is if you create a J D A, this board has almost nothing to do with it other than one or two members are appointed to that.
Right.
And, uh, as somebody who's currently in the search for somebody for the housing, it's not easy to find.
No, you're right, you're right.
That's a, it's just a whole nother conversation of like, you're gonna have to get ten to twenty people and one or two commissioners to buy in and be on this board and literally vet these projects and do that stuff. It's, it's a collaborative effort, you know? Just, so I, I think it's, it merits more discussion and, and maybe something that going forward would be good discussion.
Yeah.
Maybe talking to these cities, see some of the pitfalls of their ideas and then maybe you can come up with something.
Come back with a lot of dart holes and decide that it isn't a bad idea.
Well, I, it's.
They need to do something like these guys are going up, you know?
Yeah.
Darts, you can dart from, you can dodge.
I talked to Russ here last month about what, just twenty-five thousand dollars by two hundred and eighty dollars per load of gravel is what he quoted me. He'll buy eighty-nine loads of gravel. And that would do two and a half miles of road, gravel solid at the standard rate. Or roughly twenty-two miles spot gravel at one load per quarter mile. So that covers quite a bit of gravel.
That kinda puts it in reverse back to.
Our nice little desk, that looked like that could be a nice little piece of equipment.
That's sweet, that's automatic, I should tell you.
Well, he's, you know what, I gotta give it, I gotta give Russ props on the fact that he's getting some equipment that's been sitting out there running servicing it out, those guys out there, and he wants to sell it if we're not using it. I turn around and buy what they will use, makes perfect sense.
Yes.
You know?
Well, and then they also did some slight renovations to the shop there.
Did you see it?
Yeah.
Did everybody see it?
I moved the year, I moved the year. Yeah, and I wish that it's, I, that has a lot more work than I thought it was gonna be. They called me to move a year and I, I moved heaven and earth in there. That, it was amazing, I was plumbing in that wall, but.
Well, they were scared to call him. I was out there after.
That's right, yeah. Commissioner Gardner, he's not afraid.
I texted him and asked if he was still in town and he, he said, I can be.
That was project, but I, I'll tell you, they, they went through and they put some better lighting and I think even going forward, we talked about maybe improving some lighting in that shop and stuff like that, cause it's really dark in there now that they did one part of it, I think the other, so.
I think there's a grant available for some high efficiency lighting, maybe you haven't seen that. I think, I think the city's working. I should get you some.
Um, John's working on something, I guess.
Well, the reason I, but the reason I brought that up is sometimes your question always comes, well, you know, you guys didn't do anything all winter, what were the guys doing? They made improvements to the shops, like you said, got some old equipment going they didn't have time to do in the year before, things like that, you know? The yard looked pretty good. I mean, it did look good before, but every year that they do this, they, they go farther into the weeds, back into that corner they didn't get to last winter or the winter before and.
It looks good.
The guys are all working, all the shop, you know, the Hazelton shop looks clean and good for the most part. Yeah, I haven't been up by Braddock lately, but Gar keeps a tight ship up there. I mean, guys were up there keeping things clean.
In the Strasburg shop.
I haven't been in the Strasburg shop lately, but the, I mean, Linton, we were doing some work in there and they were talking about maybe trying to figure out a way to sneak a smaller office in there yet or something.
They squeezed, go ahead.
Did they?
Yeah, just to the north of the existing.
Good, and that was a good spot for it and so.
Were you the? I have, I have.
Well, you see when we, when we, there were two bathrooms, and obviously one was never getting used.
Yep, yep, yep.
So we totally replunged the sink and the urinal to the other side and eliminated the one bathroom sink, cause they have the common sink.
Can we get in trouble?
What's that?
We just gotta put a sign up there, it's a common sink.
It's just a, it's just a dual bath, yeah, it's a men's and women's twin bathroom. And uh, and then they turned the other bathroom into that, which where they stored the cabinets, which then freed up the room for that other office to the north. So I thought it was a pretty good use of space. Having them two bathrooms was a waste because one was getting used and the other one wasn't.
My plan on on and out after this.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean, just, just so people know, I mean, they did a lot of stuff. And it's a lot cleaner than it was even before, not that it was a mess, but they just, they're always improving on things. So when the weather's not working right, guys are out doing stuff. And it's gonna pay dividends in the summer, cause they know where their stuff is, it's cleaner, it's organized, it's. I mean, every one of the guys deserves an applause for participating in it. I mean, it all looks pretty good. I can, I, I think it's a pretty tight ship.
Yeah.
Not that it wasn't overly before, and even before then, it's always been kinda good, but it seems to be getting better, so they all deserve an applause on that, so.
There's three more items.
There's two more items, what we got?
Three more. We added that.
They have a building permit. Number seven is a tax waiver for parcel number fifty-two dash zero 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 three dash zero zero one four four dash zero 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 for tax year twenty twenty-four.
That's a home state credit.
Home state credit.
Okay, well, I made a motion to approve.
Sergeant makes a motion to approve, second by Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
All's motion carried. Okay. Item number eight, bill be permitted for eight train auto LLC to erect a hundred and twelve by fifty-four shop on lot four, west half of the southeast quarter of section fifteen, one thirty-one seventy-six.
That is good, yeah.
Is that by his, by the farmyard?
Behind eight train. Eight train, so he removed some trees here, that's right behind that little shop.
Okay.
And he's gonna, it's actually gonna be a lot three and lot four, so we're gonna combine these parcels, see what's both, but. Yeah, so he's gonna have part of the business here and then some storage for his farm equipment.
Oh, and he's gonna be up on that highway, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
Setbacks are good.
Setbacks are all good?
Yep.
So you put water and sewer there too, like sure, right? He's got wet water, whatever they.
Yeah, I don't know if he already has it there.
I'm sure he'll, I'm sure he'll do it right.
He'll do it right.
I mostly approve.
Motion, motion, Aaron, second by Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion carried. Item number nine, I don't have it here in front of me, but it's with Wade Bama at home. Do you have the descriptions at home?
Should be worse if it's.
Somebody get that hand down with Wade Bama.
Oh, yeah, with fire.
Did it go by?
I think it was Adam Weiss, Tornowski, Nathan Weiser. I don't think I got.
Bama's right on top.
That's not a new one.
It should be, I have it here. I don't have it.
I had a chance at Mount Top.
I have, I don't have.
Stuck together. Tornowski?
Here, wait, I got it, sorry, bud. Here's Bama.
Yep.
Yep, here it is.
I'm gonna abstain from this one. I was asked to do possibly new work out there, so.
Okay, the legal description is government lot number two, west right away in acres to the USA four dash one thirty-one dash seventy-nine.
So out there about Ginnerville.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not just measured, it's just.
Where they're currently.
Where they used to live.
Yeah, and then I think they moved the house.
They moved this house.
Did they tear it up?
Exactly in the same spot.
Same spot.
Yep. So, yeah, that one.
Right on that little goal. Yep, okay.
It appears everything's good, I guess.
Sort of, you see, they built that road up. They used to go back to kind of a, wasn't that a recreation area back there for Rosenwood?
In most of it.
Basketball courts.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah. Motion's approved. Is there a motion to approve it?
Yep.
Jay Bradmore's second, Miller?
He had a chance.
I'm standing on.
He works there, okay.
Sorry, I've been an asshole.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose. Motion carried.
It's always been that question when you work on somebody's stuff.
Well, it's different if you quote stuff versus if you actually got hired, though, that's the thing.
That, well, but you don't know.
If you're not given quotes for stuff, you have no idea if two months later they're gonna hire you, so it's kinda hard.
I've been called a million times on this, so. But it doesn't matter, obviously, you want people to tell you something you're working on here.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, I always abstain when I know, like, yeah, they fired me. I'm pretty sure I got something on it or, you know, and, cause it's just, it's the right way to do it.
I know it does look, doesn't it like?
I don't, I, I mean, truly, the guy doing the, dig in the basement or uh, doing the time shower, are you really gonna swing the?
It's extra bills.
I mean.
Is it that?
Just depends on, it's just a badge. Yeah, no, I, we've talked about that in City Two, whether you should, should.
Well, it's harder when you're in a rural area and you're like one of the few, it's like with me, I mean, I do a lot of the work in the area, so yeah, a lot of times, I just, I think it's right to do.
Yeah.
What's that, it's kind of sad.
Well, I was trying to abstain from stuff, like even like, you know, I got a, I got an invoice in for that plumbing, you know? Like, when I was chairman, I would have the vice chairman sign it, you know, I didn't think it was right, but I would sign my own invoices.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, is it a huge deal? No, it's.
But you got somebody that'll mark, so you just stay out of it.
Shoot, the state legislature, they'd say the council finishes, the rest guys won't even vote. You gotta declare it, but then the rest of the boards are like, they'll take like a handbook, they'll be like, yeah. The big thing is whether or not you declare it, whether if the rest, cause technically you guys, yeah, maybe you can vote on it, I, I can vote, but I should declare this. Right, you should be out there.
Oh, that's on that last. We have to do this. What do we have to do on this, I should proceed in the board council.
That's just your copy of the minutes, you need, you need to.
If somebody had a motion to approve it.
Well, I mean, we approved the minutes, but I, I mean, it was, it's probably separate, we could do a motion.
Okay, that's.
I, I just, I'll just put in my minutes for both minutes. But I need to assign these here.
I think the assumption was we were approving all the minutes at once. I don't think anybody's got an issue with that.
No.
The special meeting minutes was just to discuss that, not fire description, it wasn't the.
Yep, yep. Yeah, this one, you're in, you know, um.
Oh, in the, in.
Do you wanna change this?
Minutes, yeah. Well, I'm sure you're doing, yeah, well. Oh, uh, that Eric figured.
Oh, yeah. I mean, like I said, there's always gonna be somebody smiling the way ever.
No, I, I, if they were to even each put in five hundred bucks, it would work different.
If each guy would have done.
We can work at it, man. Get some in, or get something, but I don't know.
June and Jim, I gave you guys a receipt contact. So you could.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
She wore all these.
L I D C, J D A.
I'll take the folders.
When you. Should we keep the info?
Yep.
That did. I missed that whole deal. I missed it, I missed part of the conversation and afterward when you like, brought it back. I missed part of that, I apologize. I missed, I didn't hear something.
I like that you bring up new ideas, so when you said I was gonna add you, that's a misinterpretation.
Yeah, no, I just, I just missed some things you had said and it was.
I'm sure.
I, I talk a lot, it's easy to miss it. I mean, I, I'm from the liver, I'll, we all pay the taxes and he has slap taxes, I'm ridiculous, so. That's driven, in my opinion, by a few guys. Kind of takes the little guys out of it, but I am, I just think having something, uh, even if, I mean, either way, if you levy them a one mill or you take it out of the, you know, your budget, twenty-five thousand a year, come the taxpayer money, but it maybe stings a little less that it's not a mill. I don't know if I could do that with a J D A, but I, I just think to have something, um, however we get there, and and to Aaron's point, it is another board that told us to sit on. I didn't, I missed the part where you gotta have the L I D, you know, the L I D C members from all these towns, it's like, who is that? It gets to be a lot of that, yeah, for, yeah, it's a big deal. It's bigger than a person thinks.